Excellent. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can I please have attendance by roll call?
Hughes, aye.
Cortez, aye. Morris, aye. And I do not see Mr. Davis.
I don't as well.
But three of us is enough for a quorum, right?
Could I humbly make a request, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Could we go back to doing the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of meetings?
I believe that is probably, I apologize for not doing that. I think that's a good thing to do in light of everything that's going on.
I hear Mr. Davis is with us.
Mr. Davis?
Can you hear the fan? He's not, though, man.
Sounded like him.
Feedback there, no?
Somebody, it was an imposter. It was Davis-like feedback. All right, so before I go any further, can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wojcik, for bringing that back to my absent-minded attention. I do have one thing under Chairman's announcements. We do have a certificate of appreciation for Paul W. Peterson, Jr., for 22 years of volunteer service to the town of Douglas on the Economic Development Commission and I don't know what other boards, I think Suzanne had sent a notice that he had served on other boards.
Well, the Master Plan Implementation Commission, and also the 250th member of the board committee, and that commission.
So 22 years, a long time to serve the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Are you still planning on doing any more volunteer work for us?
Yes, I am. I'm gonna keep giving back to the town, and I'm gonna help out the commission if need be, but the library is asking me to do some work for them. The church has got to be busy, too, so plus the age, you know, it comes to a point in time where you have to slow down a little bit, yes.
Eventually.
But it has felt good being able to give back to the town. And I think the EDC is gonna continue on just fine.
Well, I can say we sincerely appreciate it. Volunteerism is something that occasionally runs sparse in the community, so when people do step up and to give over 22 years of service to the town is, it's no small accomplishment, and it's greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
This is Hal.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Paul. Took care of the Economic Development Commission, has done a fine job for the town, and deserves a lot of credit for hanging in, and it was an exciting time. We're about to harvest some of the proof that he's worked for over the years.
Well, thank you, Al. Appreciate the good work.
I do.
Well, if you've got Hal's glowing recommendation, that's as good as it gets.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so on to the first item on the agenda. ZNT public notice and Board of Selectmen notice to the cannabis, to the CCC and possible votes. We had received a letter from ZNT asking to hold a community outreach meeting on Thursday, January 28th, 2021, between 6:00 and 7:00 here at the Town Hall, and you guys are gonna be providing Google meeting, is that correct? Because I think I see Teresa.
Yes, that's correct.
I saw her, yeah. I really don't have any, I mean, the only thing I can say, this is for the Riddell Road?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. I have no objections or concerns with a community outreach meeting?
No, they're required to do it, and it's a good idea. Do we vote on this, or, oh, yes, we have to apparently give them permission?
So, I mean, I guess the only thing that I would say is, you know, I mean, the community outreach meeting, I know that's part of going towards getting your licensing and things like that, but, I mean, just making sure that, you know, occupancy, any building permits, things along those lines that you need, make sure that those are addressed before you, you know, come back through for a final swag at us with it.
Well, of course.
I find this odd that we have to grant them permission to hold a community outreach meeting. You're required to hold it, aren't you?
So what is happening right now is the CCC has put an administrative order in place during the whole pandemic where we have to ask permission to do a Zoom or an online meeting as well.
All right.
Where normally it wasn't allowed.
Understood, okay.
We go to you guys and ask it.
Okay, that clears it up. Thank you. I don't know which way to look. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns, points of clarification?
No, we should give my blessing to hold the hearing.
Absolutely.
I will entertain a motion as such.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Can I please have a roll call vote?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Kevin Davis, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good evening.
All right, so moving on is to ratify the building commissioner employment and possible votes. So, and Matt had sent out a memo on this. Did you guys all get a chance to read through the memo? Do you want me to read it in for record, or?
I did.
So you looked at it as well, and I believe we have?
Come on up, Ken, sit.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
And we don't bite unless you get too close to Hughes.
We have the known man.
And you've been an inspector in Worcester, is that?
Yes.
And you're a Douglas resident as well, right?
Right.
And I heard that you got a glowing recommendation from the search committee? And I think there was one, Matt, did I read it right, there was one contingency regarding getting the?
Yes, this, in town, this is a building commissioner position.
Yep.
Well, we have been flexible the past couple of times we've been through this fire drill, giving the occupant 18 months to complete their building commissioner certifications. You had to be a local building inspector to even be considered for the position, but there are three tests that individuals take above and beyond their local inspector license certification. But I have every confidence that Ken knows the material. The most immediate past building official was able to complete all three exams in the timeframe, so. It's 18 months, or, you know, we're gonna be flexible about this. If BBRS can't have the classes and the exams?
Yeah, you have to be fair.
Be fair about it.
It'd be no fault of his, exactly.
Went to school to be a diesel mechanic?
Yeah, graduated, taught my class, from Keefe Tech, one of the first classes through there.
There you go. And then went over into construction.
Did that for a year, and it was enough.
Cleaner work, doing what you're doing.
Well, I've got, I carry quite a few licenses. I have my building license, my local inspector, I have my plumbing license, I have my pipe fitness license, done mechanical installations. Didn't get that license because it was a grandfathered license, missed it by a day. Wasn't going back to school for that.
I don't blame you.
So, commercial, residential.
So, and do you have, you have any experience, like, one of the new industries that's coming into Douglas, which, as you can see with the host community agreements, you have some background working with some of the marijuana facilities?
I've done a grow house up in Worcester at 640 Lincoln Street, and I've done three retail outlets.
He's good to go.
Suitably impressed. Like I was explaining to Matt, the grow facilities can be challenging. There's a lot that goes into it, you know? And they always underestimate, they come in at, it's gonna be $4 million, and, oh, yeah, it's 10 million, you know? But it's all that underlying stuff, and everyone seems to be different because they haven't come down with a baseline of how they're gonna do it.
Right. I think that's always the question, it's like, all right, we know what we want to do, now how do we do it?
Eventually it'll shake itself out, I think.
It usually does.
I said eventually that will shake itself out.
Yeah.
The most efficient way will rise to the surface eventually.
Cannabis commission, and they're now located in Worcester, they're doing a lot to try and get everything, you know, in line. They brought, they had 20 people on the board.
Yeah.
They were in Boston, they moved to Worcester. Two-thirds of them didn't want to travel to Worcester, they quit. So they were down to five. I don't know if they brought anybody back on or anything. But, yeah, seemingly, I see the most difficulty with the retail, you know, because some of it's medical use only, one of them, which I did, was medical use only, then halfway through, the cannabis commission opened up for more retail permitting, so they said, oh, well, I want to change it. Cannabis commission said, no, you can't do it.
Really?
You're medical only, to this day, and that was two and a half years ago, they're still medical only.
So they'd have to create a second entity and then?
Right.
Get started from scratch, right?
But most of these companies are migrant companies, I mean, you know, they're in Chicago, they're in Maine, they're, you know? So a lot of them are not even processing in the state anymore, they're sending it out to one of their other facilities, so.
Well, you know, take something as simple as like growing a plant, and then get the state involved, and watch how complicated we can get it.
That's right, trying to get the most for them.
He yelled.
I'll just say I agree and leave.
I don't have any other questions, I don't see any reason why not to move forward with the candidate as presented.
Nor do I.
Oh, he certainly seemed well-qualified, and I trust Matt's judgment, so I move that we ratify the appointment or the hiring.
I second.
Hal, how are you feeling?
I think it's, the background looks great, I like the marijuana experience as a bonus.
Okay, so we have the motion that's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Dave, aye.
Morris, aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Ken.
Looking forward to the whole process.
You say that now, no?
Boy, it is baptism of fire today, I mean, it doesn't get any better than that.
I came in last week to do paperwork and started the fire right there.
There you go.
We'll keep you busy.
That's okay. I'm sure it won't be as busy as Worcester was.
Yeah, exactly.
That's true.
We're gonna try to be.
Well, in certain ways.
In some ways.
Yeah, well, I was doing about $30 million a year up there in projects that I had personally somewhere in the vicinity, 1,200 to 1,500 permits, so.
They want to send some of that revenue to us, we could use it.
Exactly. I think they owe us money.
They do. Dave, get on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Same here.
All right, so that brings us to, we have an EDC appointment, Nicholas, and I'm gonna mess up that last name terribly.
It's Joan Edie, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good.
All right, and you're looking to get on to the economic development?
Yes.
Let's just look through your application.
Looks like they support the appointment.
They do? Well, who am I to argue with them?
You're no one.
I'd make a motion to appoint Mr. Joan Edie for a term ending June 30th, 2022.
And I'll second that motion.
Excellent. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hughes, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Morris, aye. Congratulations and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
It wasn't too difficult?
We can make it harder next time.
Well, we expect to see some new businesses come in next week.
All right.
Best of luck.
Yes.
Thank you.
So our next agenda item is to consider sign waiver for dog orphans and possible votes. We have Cindy and Ron. How are you?
So I'm assuming you did get the picture of the sign that we're looking to put in? She had sent that.
Let me see. Oh, there it is.
So we copied from Millville Fire Department, you know, that's the idea of the sign, to have a lettered sign, and then our, obviously, our logo on the top.
So you take the dog bone and put it over the?
Yeah, over the fire department.
There you go.
That was just a sample so that, you know, the town would be able to see what we're looking to do.
You're still gonna have the movable letter portion, right?
Yes, yeah, we'd like to have that, and then the wooden sign on the top. The company that would be doing it is Signorama. The, once we get, if we get the okay, then we have to raise funds for the, for the sign. So it's not, is if we get the okay, the sign will be put up next week. It could be the fall before that would happen. If you, I'm sure you drive by, right now, it's a pretty sad sign that we have. It's been hit, it's been hit a couple times.
How about that? Basic.
And it's had its damage, but since, you know, the town did, the state did the reconstruction with the road, what, a year or two ago, we've been much better, we haven't had any accidents.
So no one struck the sign?
That's a good thing, you know? But we're celebrating our 50th year this year.
Congratulations.
And we've been there 22, 23 years, so it's just something that we feel, you know, is a nice added thing to, to put to the shelter.
Are you afraid of like the? The bigger sign may draw more accidents to it, though.
Well, we hope.
Maybe you should leave like?
You know, adopt a dog, you're not involved in their accident.
There you go.
There we go, Hal.
They can stop in.
If you hit our sign, you're taking a dog.
Yeah.
A pit bull.
You know that's a big increase in adoption?
Oh, yeah.
It has been very busy with adoptions right now, with people's lives changing, you know?
You need a buddy at home.
We hope that everyone will continue that if their lives change again, and we certainly, yeah, we have that little talk with everyone, but, you know, you can only hope for the best, but, you know, it's been great, a lot of great homes.
We're trying to rehome our vice chairman.
If there's dogs, I'm in, I love it.
Yeah, if he sheds and he barks, forget it.
He does both. I bark quite a bit.
The existing sign is accurate, the dimensions are 94 wide by, what is that, 70?
79 high. It's just, this sign would actually be a little smaller, but there's a lot more sign.
Right.
You know what I mean, because it's just the dog bone and the frame, so it just doesn't look like much.
It doesn't?
No. But with the frame, it's 94, and the sign would be 78 or 70.
Has the Smithsonian reached out about the old sign?
Yeah, we're gonna have to do something really special with that sign.
Yeah.
Auction it off.
Oh, there you go. Hey, that's maybe a good idea to raise funds for the sign, right?
That's right, it's a new sign.
Be careful, Hughes will charge you a 5% fee.
I know nothing, I didn't.
I'll take a dog, not David, though.
We can't even give you a waiver.
I know, yeah, not even for free.
So I don't see any reason why not to move forward with a waiver on?
No, absolutely not. I'd, I'd make a motion to allow the waiver for the sign for dog orphans.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? How about you, Mr. Davis?
I got three dogs here, and they're voted in favor of it.
All right, can I have a roll call vote, then?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We are all set. Obviously, we'll need to get a permit, when the sign's put up, is there more? I could check with the?
Where do they go from here, man?
What would be the next?
Well, you have the waiver, so I think we just go back to the building official.
Okay, great, we'll go back to Jackie then.
Yeah.
They'll have it on record.
All right, very good. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck, folks.
All right, the next up is to ratify the fire chief contract and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's no votes. Let me give you a sense of the travel from where we are. The chief occupies two positions in town, fire chief and emergency management director. He had not received an evaluation, performance evaluation for either, for seven years. It's been seven years since he's been evaluated as fire chief, he's never been evaluated as EMD, and there was no job description for EMD. So over the last several weeks now, we've created that job description, and we've gone through the evaluation process, the employee has signed the evaluation and subscribes to the thoughts there. Most of that is confidential, because it's, the only person you evaluate publicly is me, so we'll go over that in executive session. The job description, I'll distribute tonight, like everything else, you know, like the board's approval after a couple of readings, because then it becomes basically a policy of the town, we'll hire people that can do the job there. What I'd like to do is, for the next seven days, kind of, I will wait for people to read all those documents and look at the recommendations I've made, to make sure that the contract captures the consensus of all involved. And then at the seventh day, one week from today, whatever I've got for comments, I'll work in, and I'll circulate the contract, I'll sign it with the chief, and then I'll give you formal notice through Suzanne one week from today. You don't have a meeting, but I'll give you notices aboard. You'll have 21 calendar days, which, at that point, will give you two meetings of the Board of Selectmen, so if you have any feedback or thoughts, you want to have a meeting with the chief, whatever you want to do, we can have time to do that. And we'll probably follow the exact same process for the police chief, whose contract is also up. But he has been evaluated, and he has a pretty detailed job description, because we had to post his job shortly after I started working here, so a lot of the baseline work is done, so I kind of let Nick's contract sit. I can't hit the same timeframe, it might be, you know, seven to 14 days after Chief Vincent's process, but we'll get to it. So we'll go over more of this later, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, it's fine.
It's not gonna be any numerical scoring, is there?
Not that you're in charge of. I did it all already.
On a scale of 1 to 10, 5 being the highest.
Why would you even bring that up, David?
Sorry, I know I shouldn't have.
The chief was looking for his bonus 15, but we didn't do it.
I couldn't resist it when he did. You lobbed a softball, I had to hit it.
You gonna keep me now?
Sure. Good boy. All right. Next is to approve a common vic license application renewal for the SoCal Club and possible votes. So, and I believe we have everything in the?
Yep. So, so moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. Hal, haven't you, like, big on the screen like that, it almost feels like you're here.
You're muted, though.
Is that better?
That's better.
I'll sit back a bit. Try to avoid intimidating anybody.
Ah, don't lob softballs.
Hal, there's no peeps in the room, so everybody feels pretty safe right now, because we know how you like to go with those.
He looks like the, like a stereotypical Bond villain on the screen. I need $10 million, Mr. Bond.
All right, so we have to sign the Telstone MOA or authorize the TA to sign? Man, I prefer the authorize the town administrator to sign it.
So I'll so move that.
I'll second.
It was so moved by Mike and seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none?
Nope.
Mike?
Roll call vote.
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave, Dave Cortez, aye.
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. Approve and sign consent and determination with Sutton and possible votes. Determination consent pursuant to Massachusetts Rules of Professional Conduct, representation of the town of Douglas and Sutton, intermunicipal agreement for building commissioner services for the Blackstone Logistics Center project.
So the Blackstone Logistics Center project is the one that straddles the three towns of Uxbridge, Sutton, and Douglas on the other side of 146. The town administrators, the managers of the three towns, had a conference call, we talked about the different things that we ought to be cooperating on. It was the consensus of the group that we wanted the building commissioner from the town of Sutton to take the lead on plan review inspection of the building. Everybody will be involved, of course, but rather than have the three people with their three different interpretations of the same code walk through the building and annoy everyone, the building commissioner in Sutton has been the chairman of the BBRS, is a long storied time, and what KP Law is asking for is express permission, because they represent both the town of Sutton and the town of Douglas in their independent capacities to participate as council here to form the agreement, which we'll come back to you for approval if it's drafted. This is what we agreed to, the three town administrators, so I hope you will support it and see the wisdom of it.
Works for me.
It's boilplate, it's to basically protect the law firm against any claims that their loyalties are divided.
My only question, it sounded like they're referring to me as the honorable Kevin DeMoyes.
It's just they don't know who you are.
I had that same question.
Did you?
Yeah, just for the public's edification, this is gonna benefit all three towns with additional tax approach, so this is one of our top goals to broaden that tax base, and this is an important step forward in that.
I don't see any issues. Anybody want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we approve and sign, consent and determination with Sutton. Second.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. Yeah, they're all in here. Now we just have to approve minutes and possible votes.
So I'll make a motion that we approve our regular meeting minutes for January 5th, 2021. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Kevin Morris? Kevin Morris, aye.
And I'll also make another motion that we approve our executive session meeting minutes for January 5th, 2021, and retain those minutes.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Mike Hughes, aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. You report.
I just, since your last agenda item before minutes was intermunicipal agreements over this building, I just will mention that the second agreement will be very important, because it will deal with the process and rules for assessing the property for purposes of taxation. And our tentative agreement is that the three communities would go out jointly and hire a real estate appraiser, certified real estate appraiser. Now, appraising and assessing are not the same, they have different rules, but assessors can take into consideration the professional appraisal, and what we want is to step outside of our immediate boundaries as three small communities in southern Worcester County and recognize the asset for its value to what is probably either a multinational or certainly nationwide firm. either a multinational or certainly nationwide firm. Sometimes you need a regional approach for all of similar facilities to really understand the value. There has been some controversy in the past regarding the valuation of the BJ's Wholesale Club warehouse in Oxbridge. The view being that at the time it was assessed, it was assessed too low. It becomes difficult to change those things after the fact. So we want to get it right from the outset. That agreement will probably also detail the basis for allocating tax proceeds. So we won't be able to allocate it as a percentage of the tax burden. We'll have to allocate it as share of building or amenities around the building and assign our tax rate to the value of those amenities. So that's, it'll take some doing, but we've got to be, we'll be quick about it. It'll be the next two or three months, this will be before you, so I just wanted to give you...
We need to get it right the first time.
Yeah, exactly. COVID, we're averaging on any given day between 20 and 24 cases, which is...
Before you leave that, just a question about, about personal property tax. Is that going to be subject to the agreement as well?
Well, I think it's going to have to be, Hal, because the Douglas Town Line is going to cut the building in half. So they're situating the building up against the highway, at least they're conceptually they are. And that's where, that's where Douglas crosses the highway into a triangle. Formed on one side by the highway and the other two by the boundaries of the town of Douglas. They will actually cut the building in half. Now, how do you go about assessing personal property by its geo-location, or do we want to bundle the whole building together and then apportion it out to the towns? It's a valid concern. I bet you that conversation will take longer and will be more detailed than the real estate. Back to COVID, our caseload has been down slightly, although it is still steady. We are averaging three, four, or five new cases each day, and about as many leave the isolation or quarantine list. The rest of the country and Massachusetts all seem to be on the same basic path, which is cases are down after the post-holiday surge, but they are not down very far. There are still parts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, especially down where I live, you know, Fall River, Westport, it's, we have way more cases. I mean, I think last week in Westport, we had, it's a town of, what, 12,000 people? We had 146 cases, so seven times as many as Douglas for a slightly larger population. So it's much more prevalent in different parts of the state. There's a lot of energy and, and interest from the community regarding vaccination. The federal government, at the end of the fall, began putting out fairly detailed guidance for the states with respect to vaccination plans. And in order to remain in compliance, the states had to submit a vaccination plan by a date certain, which all the states did, Commonwealth included. And then, after that flurry of activity, poof, right? So it's been absolute silence. I think a lot of the decisions are being put off because the product itself is very different. So if you have the Pfizer vaccine, you've got to keep the thing on dry ice. If you have Moderna, you can, you can use a pretty, a standard deep chill. So there's different logistical challenges associated depending on what vaccine it is you're trying to distribute. I think that's stymied some of the efforts. The other thing is I think they've been looking for big scores, and I think they got one with Foxborough Football Stadium being open for this. Makes a lot of sense. It's on a main road, there's access to 495 and 95. There's plenty of parking, lots of place for people to sit and wait, either going in or leaving. So that's nice, but that's not going to get doses to everyone in the smaller communities across the Commonwealth. So our goal internally has been to be ready if somebody ever said, in a week, you're going to have 1,000 doses, what would you do with them? So that planning effort began with assignment of staff this morning. We have a lot of things identified already, so it was, the work had already started, but we got formal this morning with our assignments of staff. Patrice Rousseau, who led the food effort, is going to lead the effort of helping to plan this out, along with the assistant chief in the fire department and the town nurse. We'll support them with whatever logistical support they need, but we need to identify people in the community who are able to give an injection, or a registered nurse, or other people who have training, retired physicians, if there are any in the community. That, that will actually be the rate limiting step. How many people can we handle at any one given time? How many shifts of people can we have?
Are medics authorized to give that?
Medics with training can do that. They, they give injections anyway.
EMTI, right? Both, yep.
So I think we're in good shape resource-wise. Once we flesh out a plan, we'll be meeting again Friday morning to really kind of do a detailed outline, and then we'll start to write the narrative. What I want to be able to do is go back to Massachusetts DPH and MEMA and say, not only are we ready, if you give us some, we want some to test our plan. And that will put us on the radar screen, I think. And I, what I'd really like to do is focus on the same threats we've been worried about from the beginning, which is Riddlebrook and Hayward Landing, and just actually the sort of a train-the-trainer type event, right? Got a limited number of people, let's test our plan, let's do it, make sure we work all the bugs out, and then we can talk about trying to get this more broadly available to the seniors and other vulnerable populations in town. All this is going to be contingent upon whether or not the doses arrive in Massachusetts and what, you know, what we don't have, dry ice or any facility capable of producing it or holding it. So if we got Pfizer, we would really, we would truly have to be working with people who could drop whatever they're doing to come run and get a shot, because we just, we'd only have X number of hours or a day or two.
Can we rent any kind of facility?
That's the other thing that can happen, you can get a truck, right?
Right, yeah.
I just don't know how many trucks there are and whether we want to wait for that asset...
I don't know whether we can keep it that cold.
To become available for Douglas. So we're all kind of waiting, I believe, with somewhat bated breath for the new administration in Washington to prioritize the manufacturing capacity of the country to produce as much as we need. I will say that a lot of the supplies that would be needed for a vaccination effort have already been distributed by MEMA, and the town already has them. There's a supply room here in the municipal center that's full to the gills. So it's not like we're not ready, we've just got to put the finishing touches and see what reaction we can get from Boston.
What do you think of the likelihood of that happening, they're allowing cities and towns to administer the vaccine?
Well, I hate to sound like a cynic. I think this is going to end up being a race. I really do. I think that it's going to come down to almost the same pattern that has played out across the Commonwealth throughout the pandemic. Some communities have reacted much more nimbly than others. Those that are ready to rock and roll will be given the chance to do it. I think from a public health perspective, you'd say, really, what approach do you want to take? And if you do, community by community, you're getting saturation if the community's ready, rather than trying to distribute it broadly and transmission continues. I'm not entirely sure what their decision set is. They've sent a lot of mixed signals. As you know, the administration at one time was saying you have to get a flu shot to send your kid to school. And in the last week, they've rescinded that, saying, well, everybody's wearing a mask, so nobody's getting the flus, who don't bother? These are some pretty big direction changes that they've been taking on all this stuff.
We administer the vaccines to our first responders, and they went somewhere.
So Douglas is an independent-minded community. So we've done everything we can to get our people shots if they want them, rather than wait to be invited to go somewhere. So our, our medics are already done. They've, several weeks ago, they got word that South Bridge Fire Department would be running a clinic. So it's been about three weeks since it started, and all of our people, to my understanding, all of our people have gotten both shots that are medics. So if a Douglas medic goes to your home, they're, they're all set. They'll still wear their PPE and everything else for safety's sake, but they're all set. It's been a little bit uptick in the police department, it's been less certain, but it's less concerning, too, because they don't necessarily really ever find themselves having to do that much direct contact.
But enough to put them at risk.
Yeah. So, but that's a, I've, after reading all the legal briefings, I'm not prepared to recommend that we make it a mandatory thing, because the pitfalls about mandating a preventive measure that has received emergency utilization authorization only, and hasn't gone through the full approval process, isn't something that I'm comfortable recommending, because we may have some folks that really just don't want to, to experiment that way, and I don't want that to cause friction in employment relationship with otherwise really strong employees. I'm hoping, because I've, I would get the shot if somebody offered it, but I have some certain fears about it, but a lot of the articles I've read lately make me feel a little bit more at ease. I mean, I'm just, I'm not a scientist. Somebody had to make it so I could understand it. But once I was able to get my head around what was being written, get a better sense that it's really not artificial engineered Borg technology, it's just a smaller piece of the virus that's been disassembled, so I...
Yeah, I actually got the virus via vaccine today.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because of the type of business I'm in, there's being offered to, to employees. And it's amazing to me that it's probably running 50/50 in terms of those who are agreeing and those who are saying no.
Yeah.
And if it, sort of, if that's representative of sort of the population at large, we're not going to get to that 70% number that they want us to get to.
Right. If it comes available, I'll do it.
What I will say is for those employees who are reluctant, everybody's got a test kit, so we're testing all our people once a week with a PCR test at home. And we're averaging two-day turnaround on results. So I'm very pleased with the testing program. That protects our employees, also protects the people we serve. So I think we're in a good place, but I, I'm just as anxious as anybody else to see the vaccination plan actually roll out. I think, I don't know if the messaging, there's a lot of confusion with the transition in Washington and elections in Georgia and everything else, and we're all so excited that there's a light at the end of the tunnel, that we haven't thought through what it takes to inoculate 300 million people. You know, it's, we're a first world country, and we're struggling more with this than anybody else is. You know, it wasn't that long ago. I guess the first COVID hospitalization was one year ago tomorrow. And think of all the things we've learned and what we've had to do since then. There was a time we couldn't, couldn't get masks, certainly couldn't get N95s, maybe get these, but everything was in short supply, and we've ramped up and we've adjusted and hopefully...
Plus, the concern now is with that new strain that's more contagious, that's actually, that's been a case in Massachusetts, that that's really going to push the numbers up.
Yeah. But I will agree that our elders are, are primary, primary thought. Good news again is that we do so much outreach to our elderly population here in town. We've been phoning this list down so many times, we've got it, Patrice has really got a system for understanding where everybody is, what their needs are. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that once we get to this point, we'll be able to get the word out and get it done. Switching gears to the budget, call me crazy, but I think this year, next year, and the year following, we're probably going to see a lot of personnel changes in town, just as people retire. The town has a lot of long-term employees who are reaching retirement age as a proportion of its total workforce. Our capable assistant, executive assistant Suzanne, has announced that she'll be retiring at the end of the fiscal year. D-Town's principal assessor will be retiring at the end of the calendar year. We've already had the police lieutenant retire and one of our more senior patrolmen retire. So that's just four in one year, and we know based on the pipeline that we have to, we've had to build, make the building official full-time as opposed to part-time. All of these changes have an impact on the town's budget. Some of them positive, some of them negative in terms of their dollar impact. And I'm trying to accommodate all of those things into the budget. I'm about halfway through the personnel budget. It does go quickly once I sharpen my pencil. The estimated timeline for publishing good numbers for the budget would probably be the second week of February, so in between your two February meetings. So you should have seven days to see my first mark of a budget. Almost all of the major changes are going to be on the personnel side, I can tell you right now. The other problem, I think I've hinted at this, that I'm, I'm trying to find a solution to, is for those employees who've been at the top step for many years and either got very small COLAs or no COLAs for a number of difficult years, or only a COLA after they've been here for 15, sometimes 20 years. We've got a couple of people that have been here 30 years. I'd like to try to address that, but I've got to do it in a way that's fair and a way that the town can afford. What I'm hoping to accomplish is, is keep COLAs to a relatively low level this year. The cost of living has not really increased much from one year to the next. That would give me the flexibility to be able to bring up our long-term employees. And then next year, when the economy clears up, we can talk about COLA for the whole lot of them. That's currently what I'm working on, and Gene and I have been back and forth, what's the best way to do that?
Be adding a step, you think?
So those, that's kind of the issue. Is it adding a step, or is it putting in a longevity, a tiered longevity system, unlike that, that's in the police contract? It's a fixed dollar amount. That gives you a lot of precision in estimating what the cost is year over year. And most of the time, I would prefer to give people steps and take little gimmies like longevity's out of contracts, but right now, we're stuck with the comp table we have, and the comp table ends at year 10. And most people will insist that an outside consultant redo your comp table and your compensation system. It's not something we can do internally. I'm much more partial to a system not terribly unlike, believe it or not, there's actually something good that comes out of Rhode Island, the way state employees progress. You get a step at six months, you get a step at a year, you get a step at two, and then three, and then you don't get one for a while. I think there's one, I think it goes to the fives after that, so from three to five, then not again until 10, 15, 20. That allows you to spread your steps out, gives people incentive to stick around, and at the same time doesn't bunch it all up, up front and then strand people precisely when they have the most experience, at 10 years, that are the high, pretty high value to the town. There's no reason to stay, right? Because you can't really be promoted. If you can't get a contract, you can't escape that. So, but again, the town has to be able to afford it, it has to fit within the budget. One tangential note, I just wanted to, I think, give people fair warning. We have an energy consultant that we work with to contract for the price of electricity, and they've provided us with, I think, brilliant advice. They're really on top of the market. Over the next two to three years, the public should be aware that energy prices are likely to go up a lot. And some estimates are as high as doubling, so this would be your per kilowatt price for electricity. There's quite a few reasons for it, not the least of which is New England has not been able to achieve political consensus around how we're going to generate electricity and how we're going to get the natural... how we're going to get the natural gas necessary to fire our modern plants to our plants. So if you're unwilling to build the pipeline, if you're unwilling to have LNG terminals on the shore, if you're unwilling to allow hydro to be wired in from Canada, because it would be disruptive, and that's more an issue for New Hampshire and Maine than it is for us, but if nobody will agree to those steps, then we are stuck with natural gas pipelines that are largely full. I think the lowest subscription is 60%, but some of the other pipelines are heavily subscribed, they're in the low 80s to 90s. At that point, there is no, there's no way to get gas to our natural gas plants. That's why electricity is very expensive here. That's only going to get worse with time, as we decommission, actually Brayton was the last coal plant to be decommissioned, but as nuclear goes offline, we will not have a ready supply to backfill it. It's just going to be a matter of conservation and development of renewables, which is taking its sweet time, frankly. So what comes out of that is we are in a good position. The town of Douglas has a contract locked in for the cost of electricity for the next five years. So even if it doubles in two years, we're going to be at the rate that we've negotiated. That's step one. Step two is, just to encourage people, there's a downside to everything, but at the end of the day, solar is the one thing that people seem to be able to tolerate, and it's going to become a really big part of our lives and the way that we negotiate our pilot agreements and the way we, the rules we set for the development of those fields will have a lot to do with energy independence going forward and the cost of energy. So food for thought. Lastly, just a quick project update. This week, we opened, in the last seven days, we've opened bids for the Cedar Street Bridge project. Our consulting engineers had estimated the project would be about 800, 825,000, which, you know, we have a grant for 500,000 of that, but the thought was we would have to use an entire year's worth of Chapter 90 funds to complete the project. The good news is, a little bit on this came in at, I'll do my math real quick, let's call it 640 and change.
Nice.
So well under, this was the right time to go out to bid. Firms are hungry. We are still investigating the reputation of the firm that we've, is the apparent little bidder, but we're confident that it was a good bid. We got 16 bids, 16, which is remarkable to put out a project in a town like, a small town like Douglas and get 16 pre-qualified, 15 pre-qualified bids.
That puts our out-of-pocket cut in half for our original.
Yeah, so we will still have Chapter 90 money left.
That's excellent.
Public Safety Radio, we've exchanged some draft contract language back and forth. I'm getting feedback from department heads for the vendor to consider, and Rich Bowen did a nice job of going through the contract and identifying issues. So we don't have a contract yet, but we're making very good progress on the Public Safety Radio. Spectrum has stood up and actually is helping us now. So we are scheduling the installation of this, just one drop is needed at the fire station.
Fiber or is it copper?
Fiber. And the good news is we can carry with the least expensive fiber package, the radio traffic, and we will leave the data traffic on the high-speed copper connection.
Wise choice.
We won't even mingle them. RIMC console apparently can handle both kinds of traffic. And lastly, economic development, I think we've covered where we are with the big project on the other side of the highway. We've been having a lot of meetings with interested parties and different members of town staff, and Mr. Manaric, and Selectman Davis, and myself, and various parties in interest to map out the process that they need to follow so that everybody has a clear sense of what's expected at each step and we can manage their expectations. So this thought of, you know, facilitating all of this while I'm posting the Economic Development Coordinator position, we're not missing a beat, we're just, we're getting it pushed out the door, people understand where they need to, need to go, who they need to talk to. Can't help them fill out their application, but we're going to make sure that they hit the deadlines and that they, they know what to expect when they work with us. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. So Patrice is doing the run on the vaccine plan. She offering like a sandwich with the shot, because kind of Cole Mingle like her past project with us? No? I have no doubt that she'll do a fantastic job. Patrice is just, she kills everything that she gets in touch with, like, not in a bad way, but she overachieves. Is there any open session for topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
Not for mine. Nothing to me.
Mr. Davis?
No, things didn't move me along smoothly.
All right. So I would entertain what has come to be known as the bone-in motion, although we may have to change it since he's been absent so frequently, and we're out of commissions to give him.
I'll make a go of it.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we, excuse me, enter into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining and contract negotiations, and to leave executive session for the purposes of adjournment.
I would second that well-crafted motion.
The motion has been made.
Looked like you were on our side.
And seconded, is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mike, use that.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Al, Dave, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.